Okay, let's go ahead and get the meeting started. This is the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees Work Session. It's Tuesday, March 16th. Time is 6:06 PM. Let's go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
With liberty.
And justice.
Justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence to honor military, firefighters, sheriff deputies, and road workers as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Roll call, please. Tracy?
Mr. McLaughlin.
Present.
Trustee McGuire.
Present.
Trustee Mann.
Present.
Okay, we also have Fire Chief Doug Wright and Mr. Wilcox attending the meeting. And there looks like there's one other user. I'm not showing a name. There's a number in it. I think that's a call-in.
Mr. President, you have three public people on, sign in at the present time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and get started with all business. First up, permanent budget discussion. Who would like to begin?
Which budget are we looking at?
Well, I believe there's two versions of the budget that are going to be on the table tonight. I believe Mr. Wolf submitted one, and I believe you and Ms. Edwards have been working on one.
Dates.
Where do you want to begin?
The dated, what is the date on the two speaking, the ones, the two you're speaking of? Were there dates on them?
I don't have, it looks like the date on Wolf's is 3/15/21. I got this out of my mailbox at the office, and I believe Tracy sent one out via email.
No, I did not send any budget via email. The only budget that's been sent out, the only budget that was involved is the temporary budget was posted online. I did not send out a budget.
Okay, so it looks like we've only got Wolf's budget to discuss tonight.
And Wolf's budget is appropriations, it's not a budget. I've told you guys several times, a budget means revenues and appropriations. There's no revenues in there, so how you as a trustee, or either one of you three trustees, any one of you trustees can make a decision if you don't know how much you're getting in.
Well, I saw you sent late this afternoon, Tracy, the only thing you did send out was the estimated resources, which was like a late afternoon email.
That's correct, because that's when I found it on Adrian's desk. It came from the county, and I sent it out as soon as I got it.
Well, trustees, we're up against an April 1 deadline. And per the rules, if we do not adopt a budget, that basically, that ceases township operations at that point.
What rules? What rules? Can you tell me where those rules are?
We have to adopt a budget by April 1.
Um, let's, let's.
Can you tell me where those rules are?
Well, how about Rule 505.032 Ohio Vice Code, Powers and Duties of a Township Administrator. Um, let's see. Uh, okay, F, keep the board fully advised on the financial conditions of the township, preparing and submitting a budget for the next fiscal year.
Actually, the township administrator has been advocating having this done since he started, and he had a budget document prepared going into end of the year.
It was not.
And we keep having these squabbles and these disagreements.
It's not a budget.
The Edwards, you've overstuffed your authority, being too deeply involved in the process.
Okay, well, okay, okay, so I have.
You can do anything with that.
I have a copy of the budget, the quote-unquote budget that was submitted by Mr. Steve Wolf back when he had COVID. Um, I have a copy of that, and there again, there's no revenue with it. And that was done on December 30th, is the date on that one. And, um, we talked about how there was mismatching of funds and with no revenue. So then he gave us another one, had to pull it, pull it up. But that, the next one that he produced gave himself $99,000, which I kind of frowned on.
I guess all I can do is acknowledge at this point, whatever work product Mr. Wolf puts out, McLaughlin, you and Edwards are going to object to it and fight vigorously in these meetings.
So what about you have another trustee? What about Mr. Mann? He hasn't spoke up. How are you talking about, I'm not a trustee. You didn't talk about Mr. Mann. Mann has not spoke up. Are you speaking for Mr. Mann now? Mr. Mann, does Jim speak for you?
Um, I'm looking at a budget that was put in my box this morning, sometime yesterday. Um, you say that it does not have the revenues on it, or the last one that Mr. Wolf turned in. Now, let me ask you this question. Have you seen the latest certificate that they, that was sent to Jefferson?
Are you talking to me or not?
Yes, Tracy.
Mr. Mann, I sent the certificate out to you. I just received it to that.
All right. With this paperwork that we have on this proposed budget, are you saying that we don't have $5,232,473, that if we had to make some changes down the road, we can't do that?
The budget, the appropriation said, no, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. We do not have that money. That's an estimate. We do not have that money in our account right now. That's estimate of what we should get. So that's what I am saying. That's an estimate. That certificate is a, it states at the top, it says, "The official certificate of estimated resources for 2021." So it's not, we don't have that money yet.
In the past, have we received the money that was on that certificate?
No, we have not. We do not get the full amount.
What, about 90%?
Maybe.
All right, knocking, putting those figures down to 90%, are you saying we won't have enough money for this other, this budget that's proposed?
I can't tell, because the budget is not, the appropriation, he keeps saying budget, but the appropriation that was submitted by Mr. Wolf is not comprehensive and complete. They're just random numbers. I don't know what line items to add what to or anything. Random numbers. He just chose out of the air. They weren't based on the numbers I gave him to use. He just took some there.
All right, what I would like to do is take this, uh, proposed budget of appropriations and use it until, and then you can make some, whatever changes is necessary on those.
What do you mean by making whatever changes is necessary?
The last budget I looked at had a lot of zeros, so a lot of those areas, we didn't have any money in those particular areas. So all of these, and the one that I'm looking at now, there are numbers in there. And I want to use this as the proposed budget for our, for the township.
Mr. Mann, let me make you understand something. When I give you the lemonade budget, which I gave you, which is Resolution 21-0001, those zeros are in there because that, that file came from UAN, and I, I can't get rid of, if we used a line item in the previous year, I can't delete that line, so it prints it out, and you will have zeros on some, but those lines aren't used. And that's why you saw so many zeros. All Mr. Wolf did was take out those lines, but there's still zeros in those line items. He just took those lines so it doesn't look like there's any zeros, so there's not, there's really no zeros. There's no difference other than his line items don't match any line item that exists in our budget or on UAN.
Okay, there's two other trustees, but I've gave you what I.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, basically, I took the late submittal from the fiscal officer with the estimated resources. I checked the totals. This budget, Light District comes in under the estimated resources. Elise District comes under the estimated resources. General Fund comes in under the estimated resources. Fire comes under the estimate, well, under the estimated resources. And I know that they've put time, the Fire Department has put some time into it in the last 10 days since our last meeting to dial in those numbers. Uh, the road budget as a whole, including all three funds that feed, feed the Road Department, comes in under, and I'm comfortable with those numbers as a starting point. So I've checked those against your estimated resources, and that doesn't count, uh, rollover funds that were, funds that we're holding.
Those estimated resources are not new. They're no, no different than what I gave you in January to approve the temporary, but that's just the official copy from the, from the, um, from the county, so when you say late, the submittal, it's not a late submittal. I submitted to you on January 19th when you approved the budget. So you need to take out that late submittal. This is just what I, today I got from the county so that you can see it's official now. So it's no changes from those numbers what I gave you then. So, you know, you try to emphasize late submittals, you can do that. And then also, on top of that, because Mr. Wolf left out line items and left out some numbers, of course they're going to come up underneath the estimated resources. So you guys didn't look close enough to see that some of those line items. I can go ahead and put this budget in just like it is, if you approve it, and you will not be able to pay some of your bills, so I can guarantee you that right now. So go, go ahead and approve what you may, but I'm just trying to inform you these items will not, these items on this budget he submitted will not pay your bills. And you say the Fire Department looked at their stuff in the last 10 days. Did they submit, did their stuff get submitted to Mr. Wolf when he submitted this?
Wolf was part of those meetings, my understanding.
In the past 10 days, he said this is what he submitted in 2020. So evidently, their stuff didn't get changed, if they looked at it in the last 10 days. Well, I don't think your points made, make any sense. My opinion, Mr. McLaughlin, do you have something to say? I heard from the other two trustees.
Yes, I do. So, um, in doing a budget, I'm gonna go back to when it started back in December of last year, when we got appropriations with no revenue. So we go into the new year, and then we improve a temporary budget. My problem, and maybe I've not learned everything you need to know, and Mabar's gonna love this, as a trustee, it's still a learning process, but in my own, in my own finances and in finances, I'm sure other residents can, can agree with this, that, you know, you know you make, or you have, if you're on fixed income, if you work 40 hours a week, you have X amount of dollars coming in. And if you take the X amount of dollars coming in, in 2021, the budget spends all the money, damn near all the money we have left over from the year before. If, if we, if we do what is proposed, what I've, what I've seen proposed, we will have no money in the rainy done. We have no money left over, because we're spending every penny we have. And that's what I don't, I think we need to sharpen our pencil and try to get rid of spending the money we have in the bank.
I don't have anything else to add to this discussion at this time. Do you, Mr. Mann?
No, um, I'm just saying that the $5 million figure is gonna be enough to support what's in this document.
Mr. Mann, do you understand the budget, Mr. Mann?
I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get a, something done. We've been changing, making changes on the budget.
You have to understand, $5 million, it does not, does not go for everything. You just don't throw $5 million like you do at home and then spread it out. The resources for the road have to be used for the road. The resources for the fire have to be used only for the fire. And so that, that means that the amount in that estimated resources, that money is only supposed to be used for the fire with the roads. It's only supposed to be used with the roads because they're restricted funds. The General Fund is the only one that can use, is the only one that's not a restricted fund. And any of the other funds can use the General Fund. But you can't just say $5 million can cover everything. That's not the way you're supposed to look at the fund.
Okay, let me, let me, let me say this then. The General Fund has $598,442. Is, uh, looking at, and I don't have any other paperwork here with me, but looking at the General Fund, you have a total of $586,100. Now, I know, um, so I'm saying, you can take those figures and use those. We make changes all the way through the process to run our government, and we can still do that to make this happen.
Okay, okay, whatever you guys decide. When you don't have money to pay the bills, that's gonna be on you guys. It's not on mine. I told you what I had to say, and that's all I can.
Okay, um, so the, the total road budget you're looking at there, Mr. Trustee Mann, was $586, 586,100. And for 2021, according to this brand-new official certificate we received, the fund is bringing in $389,000. The other 218, uh, the 200, okay, actually, actually, the other 200,000, we have, you, the budget is 586. We got 380 coming in, so the extra $208,000 is money that's left over from the previous year. What are we gonna do in 2022?
I'm looking at $578,816. Do you have a pick?
Uh, incoming or outgoing?
That was a toll.
Of incoming or outgoing?
That was incoming from the, uh, from the state.
I have $598, of which 218, just using raw numbers, just rounding it off for ease of conversation. Total of $598 and some change coming, total coming in to be used, available for, for 2021. But we have 218 carryover, which makes only coming in 380. And there again, I don't want to spend 580 some of it. I'm trying, I, I'd like to sharpen the pencil and do it where we keep, keep more money in the bank, if we can.
I, I'll agree with that, but if we approve this budget, we can come back here at, in a few weeks and, and sharpen our pencils and get this down.
I say one more time. Look at.
Hey, 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 hang on, hang on a minute. Let, let me, uh, Mr. Mike, what do you say to what I just said?
Well, I mean, as long as we'll come back to it, I mean, we were supposed to come back to all that stuff on the closeout meeting, all those, all the different things that we have to update every year, which besides what, uh, road tax, road mileage, mileage money, and the hours were open, is the only things we really have touched. There's all kinds of things there that we said we were gonna come back the first year and never have done. I'm willing to do that if we will come back to it, you know, it's.
Well, let's make a date here, uh, first, a few, couple of weeks in April and get back to finishing. We have a budget, and then they will, oh, fine tune.
Okay, well, um.
All right, let's move on to meeting minutes. Mr. McLaughlin, you asked for this on the agenda.
Were we done with the budget?
No, I don't see we're done.
We, we, Mr. Mann, Trustee Mann, were we gonna, Trustee Mann, when do you want to, when do you want to discuss the continuation of this? Uh, first or second week in April? You'll set the second week of April? And then when we do that.
You're discussing. Trustee Mann, McLaughlin's talking about two different issues. He's got, he's talking about the list of the first resolution of the year, the last resolution of the year, the 30 items. It's a bulk resolution to update our paperwork, our schedules, our hours, our forms. That's a separate issue, so if you're proposing a meeting to discuss, yeah, that's fine. But, but, uh, we don't have time to reschedule another budget discussion at this point.
I'm sorry, you misunderstood me. That's not the impression I was making. I was just referring to that situation as a, you made the comment of doing it in the future, and I was using that as an example of something else that we said we were going, going to do in the future and never did. I did not mean that we, that to me, you being president, and you're the one that said you were going to do that in this year, that's yours to step up and take care of. I was not scheduling that. I was just using that as an example of something that we have not taken care of in the future.
Okay, back to Mr. McLaughlin's point. Mr. Mann, do you want to schedule, with? Everything that he's got on this agenda, that could almost dedicate a single meeting to each one of the topics that's in here. On top of that, I mean, you've got 30 items, and I'm going back to that meeting. There seem to be objections to nearly everything in that packet that Wolf brought forth. So we can, we can schedule extra meetings and start knocking this out. Uh, that's not a problem. But we've also wasted time in previous meetings when we could have addressed this because of the disagreements in these conversations. So. But again, coming back to my point that I made a few meetings back, we're spending multiple meetings on stuff that should not consume this much time. So. Let's move on to the issue of meeting minutes. Mr. McLaughlin, what do you have for that?
Um, okay, well, I was just curious, where we, I'm talking, sorry, sorry about, hold on a minute.
Mike, you're on mute.
Yeah, I'm on mute. There we go, sorry. Uh, um, I just wanted to kind of get it resolved, going forward. Um, and what are we going to do with the minutes? What are we gonna do with the minutes in the arrears? I guess, you know, we, we had all the transcriptions done, but nobody wants to approve them. Um, are we gonna continue to do the long version? We need to discuss this in the, in the meeting meeting, make a decision. I, I really think we need to go back to the short version, what everybody else does. Uh, save a lot of money. You have thousands and thousands and thousands of taxpayers' dollars in there to do this long version, when a short version could be done, save all kinds of money. And we've talked about this numerous times. I'm starting, I'm about to open up a new can of worms. I'm just currying where we're going to go with it. Um, it's, you know, we had to decide about the same time last year, we decided we were going to do the short, short version. And then, um, it'll be harder to miss a meeting being on Zoom, because I can be anywhere and get on a Zoom meeting, so you won't be able to sneak one in on me and change it when I'm not here. But I really think we need to put a resolution on the floor and go, go do these things in the short version. Nobody, nobody else does long version.
Okay, let's continue this discussion in tonight's meeting, the main meeting. Next on the agenda, resignation from John Calligan. Trustees, I think you're all aware that we've received a written resignation from Mr. Calligan. I believe his last day is somewhere near the end of the month. So he's gonna be here a couple more weeks. Is everybody aware of that?
Yes, I was aware. I emailed him.
Okay. All right, next up, uh, credit card policy. Mr. McLaughlin, you're up.
Thank you. Um, so just because we, you know, through the years, we've had such problems with these credit cards and complaints about this, it's gonna be turned off, that one doing this, and no, whatever. I think we need to, if ever, write down the number 19019. That is the present, as far as I can see, the most current credit card policy we have on the books. So I think we need to look at that, go over it, nothing more than to update that and make it more current. Um, but I think that we, you need, we need to have a policy, maybe we can add to this a little bit, you know, with my employers, if, if you want to use a credit card, you fill out a PO before you use a credit card. You get it approved. Um, so Section, Section 3, no, Section 4D, Notification of Purchase. Prior to using the credit card, the authorized user should make good faith effort to notify the Board of Trustees about their authorized representation purchase. So, I mean, it just, it discusses a lot of things. I wouldn't mind kind of going over this. That's why I just brought it up, that we can get a better handle on the use of our credit cards, bring this policy back up, so, um, Trustee Mann and Trustee McGuire, please pull out 19019, put it in print, and we'll discuss it a little better in the next meeting, if you're willing to do that.
You want to advocate prior authorizations in using the cards.
Like, it's just, that's what we need to talk about, because it's in here. That's it, that's in the policy we have today.
I would agree with that approach, and I think that's not being adhered to by staff. And by virtue of blanket purchase orders, a lot of things are being purchased that should come across the trustees' desks for approval before the purchases are made. So you've got no dispute from me on a change like that or stricter adherence to it. We also have a finding from the previous audit that's recommending changes to the credit card policy, so that's definitely something that needs to be addressed.
Yep.
So that we can close out that audit finding issue. So that we can close out that audit finding issue. Uh, and I've got some things that I'd like to add to that also, so we're on the same page on that.
Thank you. Trustee Mann, uh, will you be able to pull that document up, can you print that and look at it and have your thoughts of maybe ready at some point in the future?
I will.
Thank you.
Well, let's go ahead and, let's put that, uh, I don't know if an hour would do it. I think we need two hours for a discussion like that. Um, I'm gonna make a note here that we need two hours for credit cards and start trying to map out some extra meetings to knock out these issues. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is employee reviews 2020, you're up, Mr. McGlaughlin.
Thank you, so, uh, we as a board, we, we, um, do reviews of, um, the leaders, and I guess that'd be the road superintendent, Mr. Wolf, uh, the fire chief, uh, Mr., Mr. Harper, Mr. Doug Wright, sorry about that, wow, that didn't feel good. Uh, Mr. Doug Wright, and then, uh, Mr. Superintendent, um, Mr. Steve Wolf. So that's what we need to do, we as a board, uh, we need to get this done, this is part of the job we have with the responsibility of residents. And then also we need to ask, I guess I'd ask Mr. Doug Wright, um, did you perform yours, and then Mr. Steve Wolf, did you perform yours on the road department? Have those been done, are they in a file someplace?
Well, part of order, Mr. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Doug Wright has not been with the township for a year, so he is not eligible for an.
Yeah, that's right, and I did mention that, I did mention that in a previous email or meeting, yeah, that's right, I did, you're correct on that, I did mention that before. So he's, he's out of there, you lucky dog. So, so anyway, um, that leaves Mr. Wolf in there for the administrator position and road department position. So, um, ready to tackle that anytime, guys.
So do you have something prepared for that meeting already?
No, I'm working on it, I can work on it, I worked on it several months ago, and kind of put it on the back burner, I can bring it back up and get it updated. What about you, you got anything prepared?
If we don't have a meeting, I haven't done any work on it. I know why you want to meet with Wolf, but so we're gonna need an executive session for that there.
Exactly how you, uh, a Zoom Jefferson Township there is the Zoom guy. Hey, Zoom guy, you, you on here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, hey, so, is there a way to, I mean, I, I guess I use somebody's trust or whatever, is there a way to do an executive session and stay in the Zoom, do we know how we do that yet, are you, are you familiar enough with it to do that for us?
Well, I don't know how to do that, but I'm gonna caution you that, there's been several months.